Start this evening off with a public hearing, so I call the hearing to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Absent.
Absent. Trustee Cammer?
Here.
Carbonell?
Here.
Daeney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. This evening we start a meeting with a public hearing. Establishment of special service area if the Bartlett Ridge subdivision requires a public hearing before the village board. The SSA is necessary to provide a backup source of funding for the stormwater detention system and the development. DePage County stormwater ordinance requires this backup funding mechanism. Jim, can you enlighten us?
Thank you, Mayor. I have put on the screen the subject area of the special service area, which is the Bartlett Ridge subdivision. Bartlett Ridge is going to have forty-nine total lots, forty-five single-family homes. The special service area bond amount will be a maximum of nine-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, forty-four dollars. The, excuse me, we approved the authorization for it on April 5th with ordinance twenty-sixteen-twenty-four. This is the public hearing. The public hearing notice was published in the Daily Herald within the required timeframe. The petitioner is represented here, and the special service area sixty-day expiration will be on July 3rd, and after that, we will have an ordinance establishing it for your review. There is thirteen-point-five-three-nine acres in the development. If there are any questions, I will try to answer those.
Does anybody have any questions for petitioner or for staff?
This is pretty typical of all new developments.
Yes.
Go in, and Bartlett.
Yes.
Is there anyone in the audience that says any questions for the staff or comments?
Hi, everyone. My name is Mark Iden. I'm the attorney for William Ryan Holmes. I just have a few very short comments. Number one, we're in support of the special service area, so that's, I want to make that clear up front. As I reviewed the ordinance, well, let me step back. Whenever we do a real estate sale contract to a consumer, we have to disclose in that contract whether there is a special service area or not, and of course, we would do that. My problem is if they get a copy of the special service area documents before signing the contract or during any due diligence period, when they look at the ordinance, they'll see nothing in there that it is intended as a backup. And when I see a million dollars on a special service area, I think it's going to be an obligation that I have from the get-go. And all I'm looking for is to see if, we can't put something in the final ordinance that says it's a backup ordinance intended to be enacted, or the SSA enacted, at such time as there is one of these defaults in the performance of maintenance, or repairs, or reconstruction of the stormwater management facilities, and that the bonds and the levy on the taxes don't actually go into effect until such time as the SSA is enacted. My understanding is that you authorize everything by virtue of your ordinance, but I'd like to take the next step and say, nobody's going to get charged any money until such time as we see a problem, we enact the SSA, we sell the bonds, we put the item on everybody's tax bill. It's the only thing I saw missing, and it's, it's a problem for us as a practical problem because we have to sell to people in a market that's kind of, it's not going great guns. We expect to do well here, but, you know, every time you have one guy fall out and you're selling two homes a month, it becomes a problem. And people get skittish about every dollar these days, as they should. So I just want to have something in the ordinance. I mean, it just, it lays out everything. I just wanted to lay out one more thing, saying, none of this will actually occur until the village determines that there's a problem, and then they say, okay, it's time to enact the ordinance, let's sell the bonds, let's put the levy on the tax bill.
Let me explain a couple of things. We do put in the final version of the recorded covenants, the CCRs, that there is this backup SSA. So it spells out that it's a backup SSA. The ordinance actually is passed, and it gets recorded against the property. It can be clearer that it's in the event that either, when the developer's still there, you guys are in default, or in the future, if the homeowners association fails in the obligations to replace storm sewers. The idea being that these, this stormwater management syst- uh, system that serves the subdivision, should it fail, it isn't a cost that the whole village would pay, it would be the owners of this development. And, you know, the fact, to make it clear, perhaps, that it's a backup, I don't have, I don't think we have a problem with that, but it actually shows as a line item on the tax bill, right off the bat. It's a condition in the ordinance, it will be, and I believe it was in the ordinance approved of preliminary PUD plan, but in the final plat, that you have to disclose the SSA to prospective buyers. There's a provision in your contract, because the CCRs, they often don't see till they're seeing the title or the closing, so.
Well, we fully expect that every title report that shows up on title will show the SSA.
Right.
I assume the tax bill for that line item will be zero until such time it's enacted.
Yes, yes.
All I, all I need then is something in the ordinance that just says this is backup. The bonds don't get sold day one.
Right.
And, you know, because at twenty years, the interest gets paid over twenty years, and then the principles do, and it's a big number, and you divide it by forty-five, people get scared. It's about five, six, seven, well, if it's two-hundred-and-eleven, it's like six thousand, but we have four times that amount as a backstop, and by that time, it could be twenty thousand dollars. I just want to scare people away.
Right. Understood.
So, if you're okay with that, then
Yes.
We're happy campers.
That's not a problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, we'll make it clear.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions?
It's intended to be a backup.
Right, and every, every backup SSA ordinance that I've ever seen or written always has backup in it.
Yeah.
And even if I see it from the title side, it's pretty easy to figure out what's going on.
Yeah, well.
So we'll make sure that's
Clear.
Good. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments in regards to the Ridge public hearing? Hearing done. Entertainer motion to adjourn the hearing.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Daeney, seconded by trustee Cammer. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonell?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Hearing's adjourned. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting. I call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erns, absent.
Cammer?
Here.
Carbonell?
Here.
Daeney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. In lieu of an invocation this evening, I would just like us to stand, and later on in our meeting, we're going to be honoring the Police Officer Memorial Day, so we'll just observe a moment of silence for the Police Officer Memorial Day. It's May fifteenth, and then we'll go right into the Pledge of Legions, led by Michael Shutt, who is here as a scout, and Carter Simons is here as a scout also. So, observe a moment of silence for the Police Officer Memorial Day, May fifteenth. Thank you. Mr. Shutt, am I saying that right? Step up the podium, let us know what badge you're working on, and then lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
My name's Michael Shutt, and I am working on the Citizenship in the Community Barrett Badge for my Eagle Scout, which I should hopefully be getting soon. All right. Raise attention.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Shutt, and good luck with your badge. On our consent agenda this evening, all items listed on your agenda with an asterisk will be considered in one motion. We no further discussion on those items. At this point, is there anything that any member would like to add to the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to add, I think one of these I can add. Or maybe even both. Under F, Public Works Committee, the Stearns Road-Country Creek Extension Project, and number two, two thousand and sixteen sanitary sewer lining, unless there's any objection.
Do we have any discussion on those? I wouldn't mind discussing the sewer lining, so I wouldn't mind just getting a rundown from Dan on that, but I'm fine with the other one.
Okay.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the minutes from the board meeting and committee minutes from April nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. The consent will also include the bills list from May third, two thousand and sixteen. Also on the consent agenda this evening is standing committee reports, items License and Ordinance Committee, number D two, Memorial Day Open Burn Permit Request, License and Ordinance Committee, number D three, Sweet Day Gourmet Adopt a Highway Request, License and Ordinance Committee, D four, Arts and Bartlett Amplifier Permit Request, License and Ordinance Committee, D five, Bannerman's Amplifier Permit Request, and to amend, we will look for an amended consent agenda to add item F, Public Works Committee, Stearns Road slash County Creek Extension Project.
I have one other question I'd like to ask. We've all read the AT&amp;T License Agreement Amendment. That's pretty straightforward. Does anybody have any objection about adding that? There's nothing to it, really nothing to discuss. I'd like to add that, if we may.
All right. And also, the amended consent agenda will include D one, AT&amp;T License Agreement Amendment. I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda as said.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cammer, seconded by trustee Daeney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonell?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
That motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Carbonell. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonell?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries. We have no treasures report this evening. We do, however, have a lengthy president's report. First item on the president's report is the National Police Week proclamation. And I will read that. Proclamation for National Police Week, May fifteenth through twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Police Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls is Police Week, and whereas the members of the Bartlett Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Bartlett, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation, and whereas the Bartlett Police Department has grown to be a modern, scientific, and nationally accredited law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, Village President, call upon all citizens of Bartlett and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May fifteenth through twenty-one as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an inviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and the security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Bartlett to observe Sunday, May fifteenth, as Police Officers Memorial Day, to honor those police officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes, dated May third, two thousand and sixteen. And if there's no objection, I shall proclaim. Next item we have this evening is a proclamation recognizing Bike Month. Can you see Terri's in the audience? Village of Bartlett proclamation recognizing May one through thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen, as Bike Month. Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas today, millions of Americans engage in bicycling because it is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of fitness, and provides quality family recreation, and whereas the Village of Bartlett with the Active Transportation Alliance are promoting bike-riding events, including the Kickstand Classic later this summer, and whereas Ride Illinois is educating cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles at www.bikesafetyquiz.com, which I took, and whereas Ride Illinois and Active Transportation Alliance and independent cyclists throughout our village are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operations and safety education, in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, Village President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DePage, and Kane Counties, Illinois, do hereby proudly proclaim the month of May, two thousand and sixteen, as Bike Month in Bartlett, dated the third of May, two thousand and sixteen. I will so proclaim, if there's no objection. Finally, the proclamations, we have the Village of Bartlett National Public Works Week, May fifteenth through twenty-one. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, such as water supply, wastewater treatment, and sanitary sewers, storm sewers, streets, and highways, and forestry, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of a community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel of public works departments is supported when citizens understand the importance of public works. And now, therefore, I, Kevin Wallace, Village President, do hereby proclaim May fifteenth through twenty-one, two thousand and sixteen, as National Public Works Week in the Village of Bartlett, and call upon all citizens and the civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involving and providing our public works, and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, dated third of May, two thousand and sixteen. And if there's no objection, I shall proclaim. Next on the president's report, we have some liquor license renewals. We have a Class D liquor license request, which came in from Arts in Bartlett. Class D liquor license is a special license designated for an annual event. The Arts in Bartlett has an annual art fair held in Bartlett Park on June twenty-five and twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen. Everything that they submitted to us was in order, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the Class D liquor license for Arts in Bartlett.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Daeney, seconded by trustee Cammer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonell?
Yes.
Daeney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Additional liquor license that need renewals include Bartlett Park District, Apple Orchard Golf Course, Bartlett Park District, Oak Room, Bartlett Park District, Villa Olivia, Cadillac Ranch, Texas Barbecue and Boot Bar, Doing Business Now, as some of you may know, as Lucky Star slash Moretti's Banquets, Cadillac Ranch, Texas Barbecue and Boot Bar, doing business as Moretti's and Lucky Star, McCaffrey, doing business as McKay's, McMays Tavern and Grill, R.N. McRaine, doing business as Seven-Eleven on Prospect Avenue, Shelby's, Brewster Creek, doing business as Shelby's, Stella's, Sterns Crossing, doing business as Stella's Place, Ings, Sun 'n Sun, doing business as Silver Lake Restaurant, Artiame Inc., doing business as Town Liquor and Food, Downtown Bartlett Inc., doing business as Platform Eighteen, Bond Drug Company of Illinois LLC, doing business as Walgreens on Route fifty-nine, O'Hare and Vance Enterprises, doing business as O'Hare's Pub and Restaurant. If there's no objection, I intend to issue those liquor licenses. That was a mouthful. Moving on, the next item we have this evening is questions. Anybody on the board have any questions for staff? Hearing done, we'll move on to Town Hall. This is the portion of the meeting where if anybody in the audience would like to address the board, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try and keep your comments to three minutes. Would anybody like to address the board at this time?
Terry Witt, four seventy-one Southwestern Avenue in Bartlett. And I just want to say, thank you for the proclamation on Bike Month. I think we all have memorable bike rides that we can think back and enjoy. I know when our grandkids come over, if we don't go to Bannerman's and get an ice cream cone, I'm in trouble. And we've all had those things. But I'd like to talk about the economic impact that bicycle tourism brings. And it's significant. A couple of years ago, the Illinois Prairie Path, when they had their fiftieth anniversary, we did trail counts. We also had tables at various locations along the path, and we would ask people, you know, how far did you come? How much, how much time do you, how many times do you come? How much money do you spend? Questions like that. We had a table over in Wayne, where the Prairie Path crosses Army Trail Road, and forty thousand trail visits a year cross over there. So we asked them all, all those kinds of questions. We had a table in downtown Wheaton. Downtown Wheaton is considered mile zero, hundred and ninety thousand visits a year, because you got all these trails coming in, and it's only one block away from the metro station besides. There are a lot of points along the trails that have a hundred thousand visits. We did the Fox River Trail the year before, there were several towns with a hundred thousand trail visits, and I think probably a lot of, a lot of us here have ridden on the Fox River Trail, you know, Yvotavia, St. Charles. And what I found interesting, Elgin last year opened their Riverside Promenade right on the river. They've got new construction going in, townhomes, apartments, all kinds of things, right along the trail. Aurora this year has just created a protected bike lane along River Street that connects the north end of the Fox River Trail to the south end of the Fox River Trail, so people can get across. And along that protected bike lane, there are new businesses, new buildings, new construction, a lot of investment going on, and it's because people gravitate to trails. Hundred and ninety thousand in Wheaton, forty thousand over in Wayne. And the thing is, Bartlett is at a crossroads of new regional trail development that we can take great advantage of. The North Central Trail is about to be completed, when the bridge goes over the County Farm Road this summer, and a couple of years when we get the first-ever entrance into the largest forest preserve of DuPage County, that trail will be thirty-five miles long going from Bartlett to Bussy Woods. Of course, when the Elgin-O'Hare Bike Way gets completed, it'll run right into that. And that runs into the Salt Creek Trail, run into the Illinois Prairie Path, run into the Fox River Trail, we run into the Great Western Trail, and there's a couple more. Oh, yeah, the West Branch Trail, how could I forget? Right over at Firehouse Number Two. You get on that trail, you can go all the way to Naperville. Hey, the Starbucks coffee is just as good in Naperville as it is in Bartlett, but maybe we should get some of those Naperville people to come up and drink our coffee and have a time. So, what we have on these trails, I like to call them trail travelers. If you can imagine, you know, the caravans go across the desert, well, you know what? They stop at Oasis's for refreshment, for stopping. Fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, you know, what if, what if we had forty thousand people going on the trails, coming through Bartlett, stopped at Dogfather, Sonic, Emily's, Bannerman's? They had a hamburger, a Coke, a fry, maybe a group of twenty of them in fifteen minutes, ringing up the cash register at a hundred bucks a person? These are the people we need to bring in to Bartlett, money from outside the community. There are lots of people out there. In Europe, where we know they bicycle a lot, fifty-seven billion dollars in trail tourism. You can pass around the states, Illinois is in there, and they figure thirty dollars a person spending when they're out there on the trail for economic development, so. Anyway, I would just like to applaud the proclamation, and also the creation of the Bike Run Committee and the Kickstand Classic, and for us, I think we can take advantage of a lot of things and bring a lot of money into our businesses here in town that'll benefit us greatly. And, was that a question? No. Okay. The other thing, just want to say, hey, thanks for approving that Brewster Creek culvert thing in your, that's a, that's a pretty nasty section of trail that really, really needs some fixing up.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board this evening? I know, Terry, you started out your comments with there was a lot of memorable events on bike rides. I've had one or two not very fond, memorable events on a bike ride with kids, but it's always usually pretty good. It is, you always remember them, even if they're not good. And, and just to reiterate your story, when our kids were little, we rode down to St. Charles and trailed all the way down there and had some food and rode all the way back, so. Thank you. Next item we have this evening is our Understanding Committee reports, Planning and Zoning Committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report on planning and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item we have, Understanding Committee reports, is the Building Committee, Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There's nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have this evening, Understanding Committee reports, is the Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Daeney.
Mr. President, we have one item on the agenda this evening. It's the Bartlett Hills Resurfacing Project. And, pardon me, on March thirty, thirty-one, two thousand and sixteen, a notice of bidders was published, an examiner, and the IDOT Bulletin soliciting bids for the Bartlett Hills Golf Course Resurfacing Project. The project consists of HMA removal and replacement, and the overlay of existing HMA parking lots. Thirteen bid packets, packets were distributed to prospective bidders. Bids were due no later than April fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at ten a.m. Ten packets were returned. Johnson Paving Company of Arlington Heights submitted the low bid at a hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents for this project. Johnson Paving Company has worked with the village, past projects, and staff feels they are capable of completing this project. There is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar, dollars allocated for this project. Based on the bids submitted, I have, before I make any recommendation, I have some questions I need to ask. When I went through the tally sheets, I happened to look at the, obviously, there was a great deal of discrepancy in a couple of the items. And when I looked under the, let's get back here to the correct page. When I looked at Johnson Paving's bid, I looked at item fourteen, was Traffic Control and Protection. On that specific item, they bid nine thousand dollars. When I looked at the other bids that also When I looked at the other bids that also had submitted in that category, I looked at bids at $1,500, I had one at $8,500, another at $8,500, but $500, 500, and again, $9,000, and at $2,500, $1,600, $1,600, $3,000, $3,000, et cetera. Why is there such a discrepancy?
Trustee Daney, I think the contractors will hide their money in various spots or the, what they're figuring they'll pay.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Is that on?
Yeah, it's on, but...
The contractors will move the amounts that they are guessing they're going to spend in different spots. In this case, there's probably a question of exactly what they're going to control as far as traffic protection. But that, that's a very common item to see different amounts in, even more so when you get out in the roadways. For instance, I think you noted one, yeah, a couple over from Johnson, you'll see somebody's allocated only $500.
Right.
They still have to provide it. It's just they're, they figure they're taking a chance there with a lower amount. Maybe they've got another one that's higher. It's all a question of where they put the dollars they're going to be spending.
Did we talk to them at all about the, that bid amount in that specific category?
Traffic control?
Right.
I don't believe so.
Well, I know that...
They are not, they're not stuck being paid $9,000, excuse me, for traffic control.
No, I know the bid amount's 127.
Correct.
Right, and they just, I'm just breaking that nine grand out of there. Did they say when this project was, if it's in here, I missed it, when did they plan on starting this project?
That's a, we're working with the golf course guys and the contractor to get the best possible date. Sooner the better, obviously, but we have to make sure we stay out of whatever is on their agenda and their plans, so we're still working on that.
Yeah, well, there's no doubt that it has to be resurfaced, you know?
Yes.
Better not, enough I see it. And I know they're under budget.
Well, that's the good news. There was 13 firms that responded, and again, we got some really good prices.
So if I understand you correctly, the $9,000 that they have earmarked on that one specific item, that just could be where they're making up for other items that they may have bid lower and...
Exactly.
The way to look at this proposal is to look at the full amount, which was 107,000.
Correct.
Gotcha. So I guess then, with that explanation, I recommend that the bid be awarded to Johnson Paving Company of Arlington Heights, and I make a motion for the passage of Resolution 2016...
37?
A resolution approving the agreement between the Village of Bartlett and Johnson Paving Company for Bartlett Hills Golf Course Resurfacing Project in the amount of $127,587.39.
Taken. Taken by trustee Daney. Seconded by trustee Carbonero. No questions? Can I just ask when it was resurfaced the last time? Do we know that? I think I remember it.
Probably six or seven years ago, we did a little patching and we sealed it. But it hasn't been resurfaced in...
Long time.
It's a long time.
Yeah.
Now, did they do this in sections, I'm assuming?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't go forward until Kevin and everybody over there is set with the plan. But that's exactly right. We'll probably wind up doing it in halves.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, Chairman Daney.
That's all we have on our agenda this evening, Mr. President.
Chairman Daney, next item we have on our agenda this evening is, Standing Committee reports is under Licenses and Ordinances. Committee Chairman Aaronz, who is absent, all of her listed items were included on the consent agenda. Next item we have, Understanding Committee reports, is the Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonero.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonero. Next item we have this evening on our Standing Committee reports is Public Works Committee, Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two items under Public Works, and one of them went to the consent agenda. The remaining one is the 2016 sanitary sewer, sewer lining project, of which we can let staff address any questions that the board might have.
We can go ahead and take a motion, and then we'll discuss it. You want to go ahead and make your motion?
Sure. All right. I move the Village Board to approve Resolution 2016-38.
Forty, it's actually forty.
Forty. A resolution approving the 2016 sanitary sewer lining agreement between the Village Department and Insituform Technologies USA LLC.
Taken. Taken by trustee Cammer. Seconded by trustee Hopkins. Is there any discussion? I guess one of the things that I'd like to do when I see something for $312,000 is, that's one of the reasons I kind of wanted to talk about it a little bit. This is a lot of information, and where are we at with sewer, with the sewer lining and overall? And where are we doing it at?
I think last year was one of our first years of really doing a sewer lining program. And last year, we went, we've been focusing on the area, our oldest part of town is the area north of the tracks, kind of west of Prospect and east of Oak. It's kind of the area that we've been focusing on. We did pretty much the east half of that last year, so we're trying to finish up all the way up to Oak this year. And that's why we put that "not to exceed" on there, because the prices actually came in lower, so we wanted to take advantage of those unit prices and try to get more done and try to finish off that section. And basically, what we're doing is, the sewers in that area are old clay tiles, which they start to crack, and that allows stormwater during rain events to enter into our sanitary sewer and surcharge our sewers. When we put this new liner in, it's a new plastic liner that basically gets, they put hot gas, you know, steam or hot water, and it basically melts it back over the clay pipe, and you essentially have a new pipe when you're done. So it will be good for 50-plus years and seals off a lot of that rainwater from getting into the sewer line.
And are there any other procedures that...
This is the best method right now, barring replacement, which then you're digging up people's yards or the street, a lot more disruptive lining it. They just go from manhole to manhole, insert the liner, put in the hot water or the steam, expands it to the pipe, and you're done. Then they just go back in with a, basically robotic arm, and cut the services for each house that comes in.
Gotcha. How much money do you think is saved using this method versus digging up roads and...
That's a good question. It's probably about twice. If you were to factor in the disruption to the neighborhood and then having to redo the street and all that, it's probably about twice is my guess. I'd have to run numbers, but it's probably in that neighborhood.
How long is it before the entire, I guess would be north side of the village is completely done?
If we continue with our program, we're hoping, well, probably another year or two would address most of that old part of town. And then we've got other spots where we've been monitoring with our flow monitors and televising, where we want to address some of those areas where we see infiltration.
And on newer portion of town, what is the differential with the piping? The, I mean, how, what's the life of that? Are we going to see this again in the newer portion of town at some point?
The newer portions of town are, use PVC, and they have the gaskets. So those, I mean, those are holding up very well, and we're hoping that they will last another 50 years, but only time will tell. And then we'll be looking at, if we start to see issues, then we'll be looking at doing some type of lining or something like that at that point. But right now, the PVC lines that we have in town have been, and we've been televising just to monitor how those are doing, and they're doing well, so we'll keep monitoring it.
Dan, you bring up an interesting point about monitoring from the standpoint of, obviously, there's a trust issue with this company that's going to be doing this, and they're going to tell us, this is what they do, this is how they do it, and we did a good job. But how are we going to substantiate that? Is there, are we going to use some of those machines that we have to go in and look and make sure what they said actually happened or not?
We actually have televised this area already with our own camera, so we know where the bad sections are. We actually had to do some sections where we couldn't get the camera through, we had to actually do spot repairs so that they could line it. So we've already done that. So we've got our information, but the contract requires the contractor to televise beforehand, clean and televise, so he can verify where the services are. And then he puts the liner in, he televises it at the end, and then that way, we verify that all services are connected back up, and we don't have someone backing up because they didn't get reconnected.
Right, right. That's what I'm thinking. Okay, good.
If one of the liners is faulty for some reason, are they required to replace it?
Yes, there's a warranty attached with it.
Sounds like a mess. Can we see those videos?
Sure. We can share those. We have them.
Any other questions?
How many linear feet is in the whole program? I know it's 10,000 feet for this particular budgeted item, but the whole program that you talk about...
As far as our whole network?
As far as the sewer lining in the north end of town?
I think we did something similar last year. And then, like I said, there's probably another year or two, if we average that same amount, it would probably be in that same ballpark. We have some sections down by the West Branch that we're, we believe we're taking on part of the river, so we want to get those sealed off. So we are looking at televising that ourselves to see during like a rain, during this time of year, we're going to try to verify if we are taking on a lot of water. And then we'd be looking at lining that possibly next year or whatever, so.
Anything else? There's no other discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Cammer. The next item we have this evening on our agenda is new business. Does anyone have any new business they would like to address for the good of the order?
I would like possibly the new Bike and Run Committee to maybe review, using a portion of our MFT funds, motor fuel tax allotment, to fund various bike projects, maybe take a certain percentage, maybe 5% every year, and utilize it only for bike paths or run paths.
Could be a good idea. At this point in time, the Bike Committee is so new.
Yeah.
We're just trying to find out what needs to be done first. I mean, are there sections of the bike path that need to be repaired, replaced, and we're trying to look at that and what things we can do to better the bike system and the bike paths. But certainly, it'd be, right now, as we have no money, so to speak, to maintain or to improve these paths and add things to it, money coming from someplace would be great.
I think that's a good idea to try to, if we're going to have the committee, we should probably have some kind of earmarked fund.
Yeah, I think in all the budgets from now on, we certainly should include that. Our MFT for this year is pretty well committed, but let us take a look at it and see if there isn't some way to begin it before waiting for next year. Absolutely.
We could do it the way that the comptroller explained to me today the state of Illinois does it.
That's right.
That was an interesting discussion today. Yeah. It's new business. I guess this would be apropos for new business, but I was at the meeting today with the comptroller. She's discussing that, she equated it to a person with a household checkbook having $100 in their account and $6,000 in bills to pay, so. Any other new business? Any questions?
Nope.
We'll be moving directly into the committee of the whole meeting after this meeting. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Taken. Taken by trustee Cammer. Seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.